Good evening and welcome to the Monday that we're in fourth, 2019 Richmond City School War Meeting. Roll call. Ms. Valdo?
Here.
Ms. Gibson?
Here.
Mr. Young?
Here.
Dr. Sabini?
Yes.
Ms. Cosby will not be joining us tonight, she's not feeling well, for the record. Ms. Burt?
Here.
Ms. Orange here. And Ms. Green. And we have been joined by Vice Chair Ms. Storm. We have a team. And our representative, Ms. Chavez.
If anyone needs an interpreter this evening, please raise your hand. If you have any questions, please put them up. And go Patriots.
And also, we have been joined by Student Representative, Ms. Isetu. Welcome, she is a sophomore at Richmond Community High School. And Superintendent will share the information regarding Ms. Isetu. Would like to welcome you.
Thank you. I got to know Isetu because she is in my high school advisory council. And she is quite incredible. Do you mind reading this since you read it in the first person, I think you? What did you say? You want me to read it? You want me to? Alright, here we go. "Isetu Berry, I'm a student of African descent. My parents were born to the Fula tribe of Yindi, a country off the coast of West Africa. I however was born in the beautiful city of Richmond. I speak three languages, English, French, and my native language, Fula. Am I saying that correctly? I have been learning Spanish for six years as well. I attended school in Africa and the United States. In the US, I attended E S H Main Elementary, Ushal Middle School, and I am now 10th grade student at Richmond Community High School. I am very involved in the community. I'm a member of the Richmond Community's Judicial Branch, the Honor Council, where we review cases of plagiarism. I'm also a proud member of Richmond Community's Legislative branch, Community Council, where we organize school activities like parades and alumni gatherings. I'm part of D C U's Health Sciences Academy, where I will learn some of the basics of medicine. Lastly, I am part of the Robotics Club, F P L A, and Superintendent Student Advisory Council. In the future, I want to graduate high school and attend my dream school, the University of Dayton. Woo-hoo! And then on pursuing a career in medicine, specifically dermatology or pediatrics. I'm exhausted having just read this." Ladies and gentlemen, please welcome Isetu Berry.
Anyones who have any words that you would like to share?
I don't really know much about budgets, mister, but I'll try my best to provide my input.
Thank you. Next, Garros.
Madam Chair, before we move forward, we need to amend the agenda. We need to remove section, excuse me, portion 8.01 to receive the quarterly financial statement from Patrick Henry School of Science and Arts. And we need to remove section 9.01 to receive for action a resolution adopting Richmond Public Schools 403D Retirement Plan Restatement Document.
Any emotions?
Seven.
Second?
Second.
It's removed by Ms. Orange and seconded by Ms. Valdo to amend the agenda as presented. All in favor? Any opposed? Saying that we have none, the agenda has been amended as presented.
Thank you. Next section is section two, recess the meeting in convenience of public hearing.
And so also, I'd like to remind members of the audience, this public hearing is just for the purpose of budget comments only. So if anyone is here at this time that would like to speak to the budget, please come forward, state your name and sign in. If you're speaking as an individual, excuse me, you have three minutes if you're speaking. Only have an organization, you have five minutes.
Hello, everybody. Paige, you can turn the cameras. These board members, have you listened? So I'm Thoma Seymour, and I am with the Richmond Community of United Latin American Citizens. Here because I am a little bit concerned about different aspects of the budget that I've heard. So I'm here to ask you the questions. With, it's my understanding when I looked at it, I believe with ESL, there's going to be estimate 25% increase? Somebody nod, or just, so let's say that that's what I read. For the sake of time, because I've got five minutes, Mr. Cameras. So, one of the things that I'm very interested in knowing, well, first I heard that there would be cuts to ESL. And I would like to, to ESL, I understand not across school areas? But in the right now, there is, I don't know if the position has been filled, the ESL coordinator for RPS? Has that position been filled currently?
Ms. Seymour, we cannot respond, ignore public information period?
Just smile, just smile. That's all, just smile, I know the line. So one of the questions that I'm going to be interested in with the budget is, will that increase the personnel to include, will that be sufficient for the growth projection? And will there be a breakdown? I'm going to be interested in a breakdown of the budget, how the ESL monies will be spent. And with that budget and... Just be very nice to me, Ms. Paige. This is where like, will that include internet access? Is this where I would ask about having internet access for the students?
So just as a reminder, during public information period, we can't, we do not respond to the speakers.
Okay, so public information is that our kids' needs for, I'm going to speak when we have with our students, the needs are not being met as far as them being able to keep up? So back is the one area. Consider that in the budget. Okay?
Thank you.
So, hi, I'm Thoma Seymour, and I'm speaking as your appointed member to the Education Compact. And I just have a question, very quickly. This past session, we, at our last meeting, we learned that the Virginia received $9.9 million for early childhood education, and it's my understanding that Richmond did not apply. So I am, that's really not a question? Information for you. Information is, that's very disturbing. So I will be looking to get answers to, as to why that occurred. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm done, I don't have any more questions. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm trying not to use my teacher voice. Um, do you need to know? My concern about the budget. My concern about the budget has to do with our staff as employees. Because last year, we used three recurring funds, and we talked about what that would mean. This year, we're using budget cuts to pay for that. The question, my concern is, my concern is how are we paying for it as we move into the future? Because next year, there won't be any of this. What happens if nobody gives us more money? I would like to know that there is a plan going forward. And not just the Plan A, but the Plan B and Plan C.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone, I'm Thoma Seymour, and as the legislature process is explored, I feel simple thought is that they see new apps on strategic plan and short sight. Our case faces new issues, an example would be in middle school. Apparently, the curriculum does not require or have, does not have a health or PE class for every child in sixth through eighth grade as required by law. This is curriculum exposure that they do not receive from fifth grade all the way to ninth grade, and missed the entire middle school year. This simply limits, again, opportunity for RPS students. To fund this is additional money and budget. Also, on the same middle school issue, there is a lack of electives within RPS middle schools. And to bring our students on par with other localities, this requires more F T V's. So when you plan a budget, it is very important and very large cost that should be looked at.
Thank you.
Good evening, board, I may listen to that former, I'm speaking as being a parent, and as the board to the Education Compact. One of my concerns is the grant money, grants from the other city receives. It's been my understanding, we're taking a series of meetings, that some grant funding has been turned in. To me, one of the things that we often hear is that we need more money, we need more money, we need more money. I don't understand, as a lay citizen, how it is determined, one, that if there are funds that, or grant money that we are eligible for and may qualify for, and have students that could be able to benefit from it. What is the, you know, my question is the process for deciding whether or not to apply for that grant. I think one of the important things that we need to remember is getting the steward's open money that we do have, and the grants that we have received. So by participating in these meetings, interestingly enough, I find that I have more questions than I do answers. And just, and really rebuttal sometimes as to the process. I would also like to say that I do appreciate Dr. Cameras being willing to make the hard decisions. I know you all cannot speak to or address previous strategic decisions, but at some point, I do feel that we have to make the hard decisions, stop continuing to kick the can down the alley, and leave it for someone else to address. And so on behalf of, again, myself, who is a middle school student here in RPS, I would just like to see if we could get more information as to the process. Is there an office, is there a person that determines whether or not we apply for a grant? And under what circumstances would we not? If there are grants that are available that our children could benefit from?
Thank you. Saying that we have one of the speakers to come forward at this time. This concludes our public hearing section. All members, you can take a two-minute recess, or you can move into the next portion of the agenda. If there is objection, you can continue moving forward. So I'd like to reconvene.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. Our next section is section three, public hearing. First, we have the 3.01, discuss the superintendent Esther. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, ma'am. We're on number five, section five, public information, section 5.01, public information.
So if we have members in the audience at this time?
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, we did have one person to sign up, Lola McDowell. Hold on one moment, please.
Before this is now speak, if we have other members in the audience that would like to speak at this time, please come forward, sign in and state your name. If you're speaking as an individual, you have three minutes. If you are speaking, and we have an organization, you have five minutes. Again, please come forward at this time. This is a good day down.
Good evening, Chairperson Page, Vice Chair Ms. Storm, and Superintendent Cameras, and all board members. My name is Lola Van McDowell, and I retired from Richmond Public Schools, having taught there 47 years in Richmond and in Baltimore. I retired from here six years ago, and I'm still working, because I love teaching. So I supervise student teachers at V C U and I coach V P I teachers at M O K. For the past 15-plus years, I have come to the school board to invite you to participate in the Read Across America we have in March. I'm asking that you temporarily put aside your many hats that you wear day after day, and don the ultimate hat, red and white stove, set stove height, and wear that with the children, to talk to the children and read to them. And I also would like for you to give you invitations. I have invitations for everyone. I have four sites. I have Overbeat Shepherd, Woodville, M L K 3 K, and St. Peter P D C. If you want to go out there, that would be wonderful. This year, as part of an opportunity to engagement and excitement, the city council legislators, RPS administrators, and hopefully you have invitations for you as well, the sheriff's department, the fire department, and the police are also invited. I understand that you are very busy, however, I do hope that you will take a little time out and come and celebrate Read Across America. If you cannot make it on the dates that you see on the invitation, I'll be happy to reschedule you at another time. I want you all to please support us and embrace literacy. As a retired educator, I enjoy coordinating this event each year, because I know the importance of literacy and reading, and how important they are to our children. Your visit would greatly motivate the community and help our students strive for literacy in the pipeline of education. My contact information is on that card. You can look, you can call me or email me, and I look forward to seeing you on one of those dates in March. I will have my cat and hat outfit on as usual, and I will welcome you at the door. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
As I am writing, I am A. Ramon Moore, the president of the Richmond Education Association. First, I would like to thank Dr. F. and Ms. Michelle Desto for the wonderful calendar meeting we had on Thursday. It was very interesting, and we're looking forward to the calendar. However, I received some emails today in regards to the new proposed calendar. The new proposed calendar will have the 12-month special employees working on the day before and after Thanksgiving, over Christmas, and all of spring break. However, the 12-month employees at the school and the other locations will be off on these same days. They earn the same benefits as the individuals do. Other school divisions have holidays for their 12-month employees over Thanksgiving, Christmas, and spring break. Another issue that was brought about the changing of the work schedule from Monday through Thursday as was done in the past, to Monday through Friday for the summer hour, the summer schedule. When doing research about working on Fridays in the summers, you know, people are really anxious about the three-day workday, of working a couple hours during the Monday through Thursday summer hours. So could we please just take in consideration and rethink of the school principals, central office, some of you sitting around here, that you will be able to have a vacation? We do thank you for working as tirelessly as you do, but you need a vacation. So we would just hope that you would reconsider working during the summer hours from Monday to Thursday instead of Monday through Friday. And doing some research, I spoke with some other school divisions. They will remain on the Monday through Thursday schedule. And then we, then, we don't want to spend any extra money to Richmond Public Schools by having the school building open for three people, when so many people called up for work. So let's save some of that money right there and add some instruction and some of the other wonderful things that we have planned for Richmond's fine. So I'm certain that when it comes time to the budget, when it comes time to the budget and the calendar, that we will look out for our staff, E S Ps and teachers at the school board hand-hand through superintendent to take his beautiful children out on a three-day vacation. And could we also make sure that we really look at the calendar to make sure that if city hall workers are happy to use their days, that the school members will happen to use that day? But of course, we don't want to have anybody to use days unless you really need it. So just make sure that what we do for one, we can do for the other. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, superintendent and school board members. I just want to make a couple comments on your, skill name is Mariah White. I just want to make a couple of comments on your personnel actions. I'm aware that, know that you are going to downsize your personnel due to your budget. And I have pulled your actual division staff, which consists of 66 staffers. And looking at those, the positions are very vague, as far as positions. And I'm seeing some things that, based on the Richmond Public Schools, that I greatly need. And I didn't see a graduation specialist, and maybe if we did have one, wouldn't have that problem with the GPA. I also didn't see Director of Transportation information. And these things may be coming under some other topics that you have here. But when you're looking into downsizing, hopefully that you would look at them and try to reform some of their, these are names, because they are very, very vague. I'm not seeing anything in procurement unless that comes under Director of Finance. And I do have a little issue with that, because I know that you are already bidding out three schools already. And I looked and I saw that, because that's public information. And I didn't understand why the city of Richmond did the procurement on them, when you didn't have no one here at least school to do the procurement for those three new schools you have. And my other thing was looking at the budget that I was just reviewing. I also feel that when you do your cuts, ensure that you give a raise to some of the support staff that we have here. Because the support staff is not getting the raises that they need, the janitors, the nurses, and all the other instructions. I think there just need to be a little bit more detail, because as a parent and as a person who actually do follow you, and do my research, these positions are very vague, and they don't even include your new chief of staff. See one chief of staff, and that's Michelle, but I don't see the rest of them. So if this is the Virginia Department of Education Division Chief, I mean Staff, that shows every school that this would be incorrect for the city of Richmond, because all your staffers are not on here, and this is 66. So what will you be cutting from when you do cuts for staffers? Thank you, thank you.
Hi, I'm Kimmy Garrison, and I have questions about the budget and some issues based on the proposed calendar going forward. Out of 260 day 12-month employees, and there are 260 day 12-month employees at all the locations, principals, A P's, custodians, things of that nature. Custodians seem to be left off, but when you're talking about a school-based employee base, against a city hall employee, we have already, as city hall employees, been penalized two days. The school-based employees were given two days off during Christmas, the 21st and the 21st of December, 2nd of January. We were charged our vacation. There's still 260 day employees. So if you're proposing a new calendar, the contracts haven't been different. If we're required to work all the days of spring break, why aren't all the 12-month employees required to work all the days of spring break? We've already been penalized two days, without anybody saying anything. But at this point, going forward, looking at this new calendar, we're being penalized a lot more, because we're only going to, we're going to be working our 260, they're going to be working about 250, getting the same amount of money, and the same. they're going to be working about two fifty, getting the same amount of money and the same benefits. They're giving five hours of vacation per day and four hours of sick, but they're not working. But we are here, we're using our lead. I don't think it's right. And I believe that within the budget, if you're looking at that, you gave away money for those days that we had to use our vacation. They got us a free, that's money out of the door. And I don't agree with it. I think it needs to be addressed. And yeah, I appreciate it, sorry.
Thank you. If we do not have any other members in the audience at this time, this concludes current information period. Next item?
Our next item, Madam Chair, is Section Six, Board Business, Section Six Point Zero One, to receive reports from board members on external committee slash board assignment and conference attended. As Chair, we did, excuse me, as clerk, we did not receive anything from board members. So nothing to report from the board.
So this board members, as a reminder, the clerk, we sent out a updated list for the external committees. And so as you attend for external committee meetings, please be reminded to provide an update to the board as a part of your report during that time. Next item?
Next item, Madam Chair, is Section Seven, Administration Business. The first one we have is Section Seven Point Zero One, to receive an update from the adjunct, from the junction, from the joint, excuse me, construction team.
Good evening, super board. I'm joined by my colleague, Boston, with the City Special Capital Projects. An update, so you need to, you all know. But it's a very big one for us. Basically, it includes calls for all construction managers, which is pretty useful. On January fifteenth, this is a permanent team issue that was intended to award to contractors. And during the last, we began to write contracts for a sentence to the managers. One contract has been signed by the county already, and the other two are expected to be received in the next phase. So we'll leave it at that. Renton Associates has been awarded the CMAR contract for George Mason Elementary. Esten Ballard has been awarded the CMAR contract for Green Elementary. And Howard Shocking has signed, has been awarded this CMAR contract for the new school. We're all very pleased with the experience and quality of the construction managers responsible for the project. And should our activity on the site force you to do this. So with that, I'll now turn it over to the pile to talk about the other two projects.
Good evening, members of the school board, superintendent cameras. I'm Robert Stone. I've taken over about two months ago from Don Summers as interim chief capital projects manager. As Jared said, I guess, started the three schools. Two of them go through the urban design committee and then planning commission process. That would be green in the middle school. They both appeared, both of those bodies as the last month. George Mason Elementary in Churchill has a slightly different process being in a city old and historic district. It goes through the city's commission of architectural review and then planning commission. Last month, we got approval from commission of architectural review for the design character of the new school. Still, I guess, an issue to be discussed with them regarding demolition of the existing school. I think, you know, a number of members of that body would like to see that building, particularly the old, original portion of the building, not so much the, the subsequent add-ons that are retained. George Mason will be following CAR to city planning commission on February nineteenth, where we expect to get approval for the new school.
And just wanted to note, in terms of the, the second round, the demolition of the building for George Mason, we are opinionated different strategies to how to, how to get that through CAR. So using parts of the, the whole building to create any transfer or something like that on the property. So if you develop in the second round of the project.
Just to clarify, just to clarify, that parallel process will not in any way impede the beginning of construction on the new school on that side, correct?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We received a lot of feedback as you go familiar regarding the bus loop for George Mason. Thank you so much. After the last CAR meeting, our neighbors are very pleased that the loop was changed near the, to be moved near the water tower. But the question was that I wasn't able to answer is regarding the playground, the front playground. Who is responsible for the playground? Will it be Parks and Rec Recreation or will it be Richmond Public Schools? Is that a question that you all would answer or that would come up otherwise? Because this team might say they're not going to extend right there. We have two different answers. Depends upon to whom you speak. So neighbors who live in that area don't want to lose their ball field or their green space. And we want that green space also for our children to play in. However, is that, the understanding from somewhere is that it will, it will take five years to develop that, that ground area. Doesn't sound... So I need clarification at some point, please, so that I can take that back to the specific district, people that live in that area?
Absolutely. We're working on that, we should have that figured out.
So you already aware of that?
Yes.
Okay. We will have a clean soft space.
We will, yes.
That's who's on paper. Mrs. Stone?
No, I believe that's part of the project. That once the new school is built, the old school will be demolished and that will become the, I guess, playground and athletic field area for little幼童 places.
Yeah, I think we need to get the CAR handled in a special.
Yes, yes, okay. Thank you so much. Appreciate the update.
Any more questions? Well, thank you. Appreciate all the work. Next item?
Our next item is Section Seven Point Zero Two, to receive an update on the memorandum of understanding with Virginia Board of Education and the corrective action plan.
Thank you. I will be brief. The corrective action plan was unanimously approved by the Virginia Board of Education. In fact, it was on their concept agenda, so it did not warrant any further discussion. And now we actually begin work of implementing the plan. And our first meeting with the DTO with respect to the CAP is on February twenty-second.
Thank you, Superintendent Cameras. I think that is great news. It demonstrates the hard work and the collaboration that has been, that has been put forth to make this and review our corrective action plans on reality for the students that we serve in Richmond Public Schools. Thank you. Next item?
Our next item is Section Seven Point Zero Three, to receive a legislative update.
Good evening, Chairwoman Page, members of the board, superintendent Cameras. Tonight, we have a legislative update for you that will focus on the budget proposals released yesterday by the House Appropriations Committee and the Senate Finance Committee. We are continuing to follow other legislation in many policy areas. On Saturday, we sent you a community legislative update with details and status updates on each of the proposals and will continue to provide a weekly update throughout the end of session. I referenced in today's update that we will be moving towards bi-weekly communication along with a comprehensive community legislative update every Friday. The general, as the general's seventeen years is adjournment, given there will be less to report on since many of the proposals have now been defeated, but we still will communicate twice a week as well as a detailed Friday update. We have received wonderful feedback from our community and we hope this information is helpful to you as well as the community at large. This evening, I'm going to have Matthew go into a little bit more detail on where we stand with the budget. But the budget proposals released yesterday include some modest investments in several areas of public education funding streams, but still fall short of the type of commitment to education that we have been requesting from the Commonwealth. Nonetheless, as House and Senate negotiate their differences in the coming weeks, we will continue to advocate for the best possible compromise for a budget that makes progress in fully funding the state's share of what the true cost of public education will be. It is important that our advocacy efforts with the General Assembly are not derailed. The legislature still must pass the budget in the coming weeks, and we intend to continue fighting for what is best for RPS and all of our students.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. Good evening, chairs, superintendents, cameras, members of the board. Tonight, we have a legislative, I'm sorry. As Dr. Harris has conveyed, after reviewing the budget proposals, it is apparent that we do have more work to do. Between the political disagreements over taxes and state budget priorities, neither the House or the Senate has proposed funding the proposals put forth by our delegation, even though those proposals did receive some significant attention from NBI and from our community and partners. A major factor of this year's budget process has been the legislature's ongoing disagreement with tax conformity, with the Tax Cut and Job Act, federal legislation. It has put a large amount of available revenue into state's coffers, but that revenue is in limbo and the General Assembly is deciding to not use that revenue at the moment. So it's unavailable for new investment into areas like public education. Many of the governor's proposed education funding proposals were based on spending these one point two billion dollars in revenue that presumably will be received. But even without this revenue, the General Assembly could and should have done more for future education as they made significant investments in many other areas. Their proposal by the House is slightly more favorable than the Senate proposal, but they both have their pros and cons and much of the discussion will now be compromised between the two versions. Please also note that this report should be considered preliminary. Many of the details of these proposals won't be released until tomorrow, and at that time, we'll provide you with a much more comprehensive written update, and we will discuss the next steps in the coming weeks. Starting with what we've known for the last week, there is agreement with a teacher salary increase of five percent. The committees have included the raise in both of their proposals. It is in slightly different forms. The existing three percent raise is still included and requires a full local match to bring down those funds. However, under the House proposal, the additional two percent increase would not be effective until January one, twenty twenty, while the Senate would fund it starting this year on July first, twenty nineteen. The House proposal effectively cuts in half the amount of funds required by delaying implementation. Both the House and the Senate are proposing flexibility for localities in implementing the additional two percent by allowing us to receive state funds for whatever additional increases provided by the school division. In other words, after funding the first three percent, localities may choose to fund any additional amount up to the full five percent and receive the associated state matching funds. In terms of other proposals that were under consideration, I'll start first with what was our highest priority, the adverse add-on program. Incent increases to this program were not funded at all by the House. The governor had proposed a sizable increase, and the House did not agree with that. And then the Senate only funded a portion of what was proposed at twenty-one million dollars instead of the proposed thirty-five million. And now I ask that, as you continue to talk about budget priorities in the coming weeks with your constituents, colleagues, and legislators that you discuss these things with, I do ask that this is the most important issue needing your voice. The adverse add-on is an equity-based funding program designed to send dollars to schools that need it the most, and it is the best vehicle that we have to mitigate the LCI as funding formulas that do not treat Richmond as equally as we feel they should. We will need to ask the House to accede to the Senate's proposal for this program and ask the Senate to stand firm in sustaining at least their level of funding, if not increasing it further. Your voice is important, and we hope that you will continue to help us advocate for it. Moving on, while the House did not increase the adverse add-on program, they did increase the lottery per pupil allocations, per student allocation by sixty-two million dollars. This is another flexible funding stream that helps us direct dollars where we need them to go. The Senate provided no new funding for this program. Regarding school councils and school, school safety, it was an area of closer but not complete agreement on the school council ratio adjustment and the other school safety measures. The House proposals are more complete with the House fully funding the first three years of the school council ratio adjustment at thirty-five million dollars, while the Senate has only put ten million dollars towards this adjustment. This is a total adjustment to bring down the total ratio eventually to one, one council to two-hundred-and-fifty students. The governor proposed a three-year phase-in with that thirty-five million dollars being the first year. The Senate's version at only ten million dollars, it'll take ten years at that funding level to get the ratio down to the requested amount. Additionally, the House included about six point six million dollars in other school safety measures, including funding for more school resource officers. I think the number in their proposal was forty new grants to go across the state. The Senate only included three point three million dollars in other school safety measures, and most of them are related to different trainings and different technologies that the state would like to pilot. Regarding school modernization, it appears that the House and Senate have agreed on at least one thing. They have both agreed to be using eighty million dollars from the literary fund to support an interest rate subsidy program for school construction loans. This allocation only addresses existing applications to this loan program, and it will be spoken for as soon as it agreed to. But nonetheless, it does demonstrate a step in the right direction towards providing more support for school construction and modernization. I would also like to note that there are a few pieces of important legislation progressing through the General Assembly that are not part of the budget, that are related to school construction funding. Legislation from Senator Bill Stanley and delegate Nick Rush would allow economic development authorities to assist in public-private financing of school construction projects. And also allow for the public-private installation of solar and other energy-producing systems. This approach called net energy metering could also allow school divisions to sell excess power generated back to the grid if they're not, if they're not, if they're doing more than fully powering the schools in which they're installed. These approaches are a start to addressing the Commonwealth school modernization needs, but we do still have a long way to go in that area as well. With the Virginia preschool initiative, we were supporting several budget proposals related to that program. The House included a modest increase in the DPI per pupil allocation. It's only two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars in funding. It's a twenty-five dollars additional per student. The Senate did not include any increase. And then while we don't have any details yet on the specifics of the language amendments put forward by the House and the Senate, the amendments that we requested that would allow us to use our unused DPI slots towards enrolling three-year-olds and allowing families to have D-based access to the program, it doesn't look like those were included. And although the General Assembly did make meaningful statewide investments in public education, the Senate at least included two programs in their budget proposal that would specifically benefit Richmond teachers and students. You're familiar with the Master Teacher Residency Program, previously funded at one and a half million dollars, and the Senate has proposed additional five hundred thousand dollars for that program, nothing from the House. And then the Senate has also proposed one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for twenty-five awards to Richmond businesses that take on Richmond High School students and apprenticeship programs. These programs, again, were only included in the Senate proposal and will require the House's cooperation to be in the final budget. Now, with the exception of those two programs, the proposals that I've discussed tonight have been statewide impact and not necessarily Richmond-specific. And to help drill down and understand the impact of all the proposals on Richmond, we have to look at tables that provide estimated distributions to local school divisions. At this time, only the House has published this information, and based on their plan, it appears that Richmond would receive about eleven million dollars more in funding in FY twenty than was set to us in our current fiscal year, FY nineteen. But unfortunately, we would end up receiving about six million dollars less for our current fiscal year. That downward adjustment is due to our recording lower than projected enrollment for back and fall. We do not have access yet to the Senate's calculations, but we will be sharing them when they are available. In total, these proposals have shown some recognition of the critical education funding being faced in the Commonwealth, and we appreciate any increases that they do adopt. But we did expect them to be more. The proposed budget should have been a floor and not a ceiling, and these proposals demonstrate that hard work must continue to engage our communities and advocate for more. Again, we will include and revise the updates and full budget reports with the different tables and other language amendments that are... tables and other language amendments that I've spoken about tonight, as well as additional advocacy engagement steps for these final weeks of session. Thank you.
Before you all, um, take your seats, we'd just like to thank you for your efforts in continuing, uh, hosting the legislative breakfast, after it was well-attended, and thanking four members that were able to attend as well. But we had legislators from all over the state to be in attendance, and if not the legisl, the legislator was there, the liaison, and you will see positive feedback. And so I just want to thank you again, um, because that was a new initiative, and we thought it was well received, and also we had a new attendee, Master Luke. He did very well. But seriously, um, thank you, and I know it was a lot of hard work, but, um, to make it happen. And I think it's really made it a difference as far as advocacy, our needs for RPS. And one thing I know you all mentioned about continuing our advocacy, um, and we may have had this discussion, but we fought for utilizing a form letter so that the public can use, modify, and send to the various, um, legislators throughout the state. So that something, like I said, we may have had a discussion, but it's something worth looking into.
Hold on.
It's worth in this door.
Thank you all so much. You all have been absolutely phenomenal in your delivery. This morning, I received a phone call for a radio interview, of which I was not ready to go to. But thank goodness for your notes, because I read every line. You have given such great detail, so it was per telephone call. But it was, it was disappointing to find out what was not voted on in our favor. I don't understand it at all. I do understand all the complaints and all the necessities that are there. But because of your so easy to understand, this has been one of the best presentations, not just in the school system, but in working with other organizations as well. Everything has been detailed, bill by bill. So this morning, on that conversation call in that I was called, I could, commercial time, could, let me move my notes? And I thank you so, not just for that reason, but you've made it so simple when people ask in passing, you know, what's Richmond doing? This is, this is really level one, and we have a long way to go, but at least we're doing something correcting, to correct the whole problem. Because someone's not listening about the needs of our children, and I don't get it. But I will get it in a little while. But thank you all so very, very much. Well done, well done, well done. Uh, you, you truly, I think we have one of the best models in addressing, um, our, our input regarding the legislators. But what my concern is, just as the chairperson said, uh, this page, that it continues. Once the general assembly is over, you came by the rest. Look, better best.
Do you have big plans?
Yes. Cannot let it rest. It has to be in your face every day. It has to be. I mean, and people need to know we mean business, and it's about our children. So I thank you. I cannot say thank you enough. I appreciate it. Well done.
Uh, well, ditto to everything that's already been said. I actually just, so thank you. Uh, I do have a question. Can you explain the six million dollars less in the current fiscal year, if you can or no? You believe?
I can try without disagreeing with everyone. The, so every, by any, when the General Assembly does their budget, they apply what the total amount of education funding is, they apply the SOQ, LCI funding formulas to that, and they figure out how much each locality gets for each year. And then in the second year of budget process, which we're in right now, they go and they take the, they, they take what the new proposals are, and then they have to reapply what the new funding is to those formulas and come out with new estimated distributions. And in the second year of the budget, the other piece that they do is they go and they look at whatever the fall enrollment data was, and then they readjust what they believed you were supposed to get for the current fiscal year. So at the end of this fiscal year, they're projecting that our total distribution is going to be six million dollars less than what was passed in the budget last year. So that's where, that makes sense, understandable.
So, does that mean we have to plan for an additional six million dollars shortfall from our budget?
Can I ask, just to make sure that I put it into? Um, I took the summary today to believe that the, the new projection is six below. There was, uh, under the new, um, House and Senate, uh, or I guess one of the House and Senate, we're up eleven, so really we'll, we'll be up five.
Yes, I think that's the way to look at it. I personally, at this moment, can't tell you the exact timing of when those adjustments go into effect, um, but I do know that over, between the two years of the funding, there's still a net of five million dollars.
And that is, I'm sorry. That is inclusive of the state's portion of the raise?
Yes.
So that's important because that beats out most of that five.
Mr. Paul.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, and thank you guys for all of your hard work. I know it's, uh, it's been a ton, the sessions so far, we still have a ways to go. Uh, so although we do want to keep going, I hope you guys do take time for a nap in between session and your, your teacher efforts. Um, I just wanted to say also thank you to members of the community who came out in real force, um, last week to advocate for more funds for our school system and for school system throughout Virginia. Uh, although, um, I think, I think that those efforts were earned. Uh, you know, we, we have certain legislators who don't seem to want to listen. Um, but I do, uh, do again, want to thank you for those efforts, and, um, and my hope is that as we continue to apply pressure and continue to advocate for the remainder of this session and moving forward, that we'll be even more effective in, uh, moving the needle in our direction as far as these funds go.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Next item?
Next item, seven-point-zero-four, received a recommended two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school calendar. Lady, good evening, Madam Chair, vice chair, school board members, to the cameras.
So we are for need to use for, um, first review, and, um, we'll, after this, be writing public comments later over the next month for our school year calendar. This is, the, the development of this draft calendar is guided by a few key principles. So, a, a few things we kept in mind, um, in developing this calendar. It's really important to start with guiding principles because, um, when you're doing calendars, there are inherently, um, personal preferences with a lot of things. And the key is to try to really zero in on one of the most important, uh, principles to maintain, because there's many ways that you can do a school calendar. So we try to be transparent about what we're valuing in the calendar, uh, before we actually put dates onto, onto it. So first is eliminating half-days for students. We hear that consistently this is difficult for parents to plan around half-days and early dismissals. It also, teachers consistently tell us how much it disrupts the instructional schedule for the day. Um, and, um, also, as a side note, is attendance also tends to suffer on these days as well. So, um, we have a calendar that eliminates half-days for students. The second guiding principle is more teacher development days. And when we say teacher development, we do not mean the division-wide PD that you've heard complaints about in the past. We mean, um, bringing teachers together led by carefully selected teacher leaders for purposes of collaborative planning and preparation for instructional delivery, grounded in the curriculum that we're, we'll be adopting with our teachers, and really, um, teachers working together to improve their practice focused on the curriculum and instructional work ahead rather than sort of disparate strategies and one-off, um, efforts. And, um, in, in shaping the calendar here, we actually got preemptive input from our teacher advisory council, and I asked them to shape an ideal professional development sequence that focuses, that prioritized collaboration and co, uh, collaborative planning and preparation around the curriculum. And so what you see is what, um, a, a teacher advisory group put together in terms of that vision. Um, that was a small subset, but it does reflect teachers' input. We also wanted to align record days with the end of the nine weeks so that teachers have the flexibility that they need to make corrections to their grades or, or what have you. Um, but also, this way we can make sure there's plenty of time to run report cards and be issued consistently across the division. Probably the biggest shift you'll see here separate from teacher development days is parent-teacher conferences. We've consistently heard, um, you know, most families work, and they are not available during the workday. And so, to participate in a parent-teacher conference, one has to take off work two to three times a year, um, to go within, um, work hours. So, uh, we've also heard from teachers and, and principals that, um, participation then as a result suffers at these conference days. And so, um, we're proposing a much more flexible option for teachers and schools. And, um, the idea is that instead of having half-days or designated days off for parent-teacher conferences, they can occur, they can occur either on records days, so where teachers are current with their grades and those grades are all entered, and they prefer to use that time to schedule teacher, parent-teacher conferences, they could do that. Um, or they could, they could schedule those times before and after school over the course of the week or two following report cards at their convenience. And we would credit them workdays for each quarter in which they would be doing that. So we would give teachers the option, um, to find, to meet the parents' flexible scheduling needs. Another guiding principle is more five-day weeks. We know that when we split the week or have a four-day or a three-day week, that makes momentum and instructional momentum difficult, and, um, we, so try to do that. And then, we also included that when we were, when we were shaping the winter and spring break. We heard our staff say pretty strongly that they would have liked two full weeks off for the holiday break, and so we made some adjustments there. So, we do have our two full days of winter break. Um, and then lastly, respecting religious holidays, um, not last week, I know it's done, but very importantly, um, trying to respect the cultural differences, religious differences across our community. We tried, we sought to avoid scheduling any teacher days, um, on cultural, religious holidays. Couple more here, neighboring division alignment. So, um, the regional, the, uh, the area superintendent from Region One get together as do instructional superintendents, and we try to figure out where we can align, given how many families live across over, um, the counties. And so, our spring break date in particular reflects, um, that of what Penritho has already put forth and other, and Hanover County has already put forth. And then, um, lastly, we prioritize the feedback around winter break, winter break, and you'll see two full weeks for student and school-based staff. So with that, I will pause and take any questions. Um, oh, actually, one more thing here in terms of timeline. We engage our principals on this calendar draft, got feedback from them and adjusted. We engage our teacher advisory council and got feedback and adjusted. Um, you all are seeing this tonight. Our student advisory councils and parent advisory council will see this and give feedback. We will have public commentary open via the website through February twenty-second, and then we'll come back at the beginning of March for, um, review and hopefully approval with Feedback Incorporated. Any other questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Evans, I'm happy to see no half-days for students, because that, all you do is have breakfast, lunch, and then it's gonna, it was a lot of discussion time. So I'm happy to see that we will have full days of discussion in order to move to the next session. My concern is what was mentioned earlier during the, um, public hearing piece. I'm not understanding the difference. Can you explain that to me, or is that being reflected in terms of when we work, we, if we work the day before holiday or didn't, we have to use our own time? Has that changed to get the twelve months?
So, previous practice, and what we found is making assumptions about previous practice to, um, compare to current recommendations is tricky. What we're told, I'm not sure exactly what the experience was for school-based twelve-month staff members. Um, I do believe, and Michelle, please correct me if I'm stating this incorrectly, that central-based twelve-month employees, um, did have to take some of their leave days in the past. So it was a mix. There was a mix of bonus days and forced leave. And, um, we certainly don't believe that staff should be forced to take leave. That should be their option. Um, but we often do speak to central office staff. I'm not able to speak to school-based twelve-month staff.
So for the...
Well, for current, so for the current recommendation, um, I believe that school, uh, school-based staff, Michelle, would school-based staff follow the twelve-month, twelve-month school-based staff would follow the school calendar still for holidays?
Yes.
So school-based staff, twelve months, would follow the calendar for holidays?
And...
They obviously wouldn't have summer break off.
And central administration?
Uh, we are not recommending that for central administration.
So they will work with four months being there?
So on the back of the draft calendar is a set, is a check mark of the distinctions of days off for, um, central staff, um, to have a distinction between, again, our, um, our central office contract is a two-hundred-and-sixty-day contract compared to, up to the highest would be a two-hundred for our teachers. And so we do think it's fair to make some distinctions there. Um, as much as I would love to have every school holiday off, um, we, our contract is a different contract.
We have a question for now, still, Madam Chair.
Hi.
Hi. Uh, so the parent-teacher conferences, so teachers or parents can schedule at the time during the year, correct?
Um, are we, around the end of the marking period during the report card, when the report cards are issued? Well, first, parents and students can always reach out. You should always request conferences with your teachers if you want them. But official times around the grading period, when you, when the report cards come out, um, those would be scheduled, um, with the teacher and the parent and the student working over to schedule that? Yes.
Uh, last question, um, to eliminate half-days and have more funding, how does that impact summer?
Oh, great question. Well, this calendar has us ending school, so students would get out. The last day of school in this calendar would be June eighteenth, and this current year, students get out on, in fourteen. Um, so, but it's really part of the way the calendar falls, the eighteenth is a Tuesday, Friday, and the fourteenth. Um, so you get out a couple of days later, um, but I think that's the way the calendar falls more than you're, you're going to school the same amount of time, is the short answer.
It's still one-hundred-and-eighty-day calendar. There's no change in the structure.
Just, that's okay, come up, reporting to the screen.
Thank you.
I was just adding that although it ends four days later in June, the same number of instructional days, one-hundred-and-eighty, so it meets the state requirement for the number of days. You'll just note there's four days off throughout the year as we look at the embedded teacher fall days.
Any questions?
Ms. Gibson?
Um, thank you. Could you, uh, clarify too that, so the, the, the two-year contract with the steps, does the salary schedule the same for both, um...
I do not believe so for two-hundred-and-sixty-day contracts versus eleven-month or, uh, teacher contracts. She's asking if we have... She's asking, do you have a salary schedule, Jess, for number of contract days?
I guess I'm referring to, my understanding that there are some folks that are school-based that are on the same salary schedule as the central office folks. And, you know, are they going to be required to work the same number of days?
What we're proposing is the, because the nature of, we're proposing that school-based staff or 12-month employees would have, would follow the school year calendar for schools for holidays. Obviously, they would not have summer off because they're 12-month employees. But they would have the same days off that a principal would have the same holidays as their teachers. The reason we're making that distinction is that frankly, being, working at a school is very, very, this work is hard. But our schools, you know, the schedules are far less flexible and our principals put in extremely long hours. And so I think we feel that there's a distinction between being a school-based staff member and that they should follow the holidays of their staff. But if I'm just speaking about our rationale, Mr. Cameron, Michelle, please.
No, I think that's accurate. This is obviously one of the points that we want to hear from the board of the community on.
So I do think that especially, especially, thank you. Especially if we are in the budget process now, I would like to consider if there are going to be staff members that are going to be required to work more, whether it be because of the holiday or because of the change in the summer schedule. I think we would be remiss not to consider compensation and adjusting to the salary schedules accordingly. I know that there are people that, you know, have costs that would be incurred by having to work those additional days for childcare or other things. And so, you know, we want people to work more, then we should make that compensation. And then the other question I have is regarding the teacher conferences. So it makes complete sense to me as a parent with my elementary school student, but I wonder how it would work if, you know, we could have a student in middle school or high school who has many different teachers, how the logistics of that would work so that I'm not having to go to the school six times, you know, to get better.
Yeah, I think the distinction for elementary, middle, and high school teachers and the experience between the sheer number of conferences is something that definitely needs to be solved for. It's not solved in our current calendar. And I will just in full candor, it is our grading practices and advising schools on parent-teacher conferences and that set of work is something that we do need to get to, but it is not an area that we have prioritized in terms of shaping best practices for scheduling. Typically, what you would do is set up team. If we have team structures at our middle school, the way this might work with typical middle school is the teams, and since these are, teams are in grade-level teams, teachers, their homeroom teacher would typically host, be the point person on the parent-teacher conference, or the advisor in a high school would be the point person on the conference to sort of go over the summary, and because they're on a team, they would know the student. And then if there needed to be follow-up, he would do that. So that's typically how I would advise a middle school or a high school to shape their policy. But we don't have plans to mandate the specifics of the logistics of those days quite yet until we feel like we're able to really understand some of the pain points and needs. And one other thing on the earlier point, just to be clear, we're not proposing less summertime. So summer, there's not, or less summer days for 12-month employees. There's never been guaranteed summer holidays, other than obviously before the July, and that's still on here. And I do want to just clarify, current practice prior to this administration was you were forced to take leave days. Some of those, if you were a 12-month central office employee, you got a couple of days additionally off during the winter holiday, but the days between, say, Christmas and New Year were, you were forced to take that leave. And so what we said is if you don't want to take off those days, this year, we clarified that you didn't have to take off those extra days. So they did get a couple of what was called bonus days historically, and we continued that this year. But we did not force people to take off if they, if they don't celebrate during that time or didn't want to, didn't feel that they needed to take off or they had to work for some reason.
Dr. Suppe?
That's a question that comes back over to you, John, if you haven't already addressed it. One, what is the required number of days or hours for students in the summer?
For summer school requirements?
Right. And secondly, depending on your answer, how does that impact the scheduling? As far as earlier or not?
So we have not set a summer school calendar yet, but that's separate from the school year process calendaring. But we can certainly add that in as, in the next version, so that it's clear when summer school is offered. We can certainly make an invitation.
What is the number?
Oh, we haven't set it yet. It's typically four to five weeks of instruction. But we haven't confirmed what our hours and days will be quite yet. Do you have an input on that? You can share your thoughts on that.
Well, I'm just concerned that if a day goes straight five days versus four, then technically you will be done faster.
Correct.
And they've sold it forward more, because getting the leave is on that nature.
Right. So you're speaking of the four-day week during the summer. It's definitely more beneficial for summer school to be Monday through Friday when you think about a childcare or parent arrangement perspective. As we all know, arranging for one day versus five days can be tricky. It can sometimes be harder. We also have summer school partners that have expressed that the four-day week in the summer when schools are closed makes that difficult. Now, all of our schools will not host summer school. I think that's the other important note. Is all three of our schools do not run summer school. It will only be those schools who are selected and agree to do so and typically have an assistant principal that is eager to get that administrative experience so that the responsibility is not probably on the principal.
So Board, Ms. Long?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I see that one of the guiding principles is neighboring division alignment. Are there any significant differences from proposed calendars that you're seeing elsewhere? I got the impression that Henrico is getting out a little earlier.
I have not compared total dates of other than the holidays, the major holidays for Henrico. It is, I mean, that's very possible. We've built in record days and we've built in teacher collaboration days, so that might be accounting for the difference in final day, last day of school.
Ms. Gibson? Kind of piggybacking off that, I did read a bit about the Chesterfield schedule, which was recently announced or proposed. And one of the things that they're exploring this year is staggering the first day of school for kindergartners and sixth graders and ninth graders to help with the transition. So I bring this up simply as something to keep on our radar. It would be great to hear from your counterparts and teachers in that district to see how that goes. That might be something that would be worth exploring next year during those transition years. Thank you.
So, so Board members, this is our first read. So if you have any additional comments, feedback on the calendar, please divide your feedback to the clerk by February 15th, next Friday. So provide any feedback, additional feedback that you may have to the clerk by February 15th, so that allow the administration to make, or to respond.
Thank you.
Feedback in preparation for the next board meeting. Thank you. So would you like to share some feedback regarding school experience tonight?
Well, I realize that there are many things that, there are many problems around the budgeting system. And I mean, even the fracking has not even put into account the improvement of school facilities. The thing I came here with was, like, their lunches, like, more competition with teachers. I had no idea we had this many issues.
Would you like to recognize your parents or principals, administrators from the school, or any other members support that you have here tonight?
I would like to thank, Mr. Cameron, for inviting me. I'd also like to thank this Dr. Epps, Dr. Harris. They helped me a lot. They are the ones that encouraged me to be here, actually. Without the help of, I wouldn't be here. I don't have the confidence to be here. We are blessed. I would also like to thank that he helped me a lot. Translated the technicals, but thank you.
Thank you, and look forward to seeing you at our next board meetings. Ms. Long?
Well, this is about the comments on count, that you can see me next time, right? But the public comments go to December 22nd. Can we have that same amount of time?
Is that similar to the board? So, five feedback, five 22nd of February. Next item?
Next item is 7.04, receive a presentation or resume. 7.05, receive a presentation or resume at facilities inventory.
Good evening. If I could ask Patrick to assist, thank you. So as Patrick is getting the presentation up, I just wanted to be clear about our objective this evening. Really, it's to begin to get feedback from the board on the goals of this process, which we are embarking on over the next year, so that we achieve all of the aims and objectives that the board would like us to address throughout this process. And so, if we could, like, to the second slide. So what we have here are three draft goals that I'd like to walk the board through. And here, feedback. Is this the right set of objectives? Are there things that are missing, things that need to be emphasized as we lay out this obviously very complicated work? So, first goal, develop new zones for RPS schools that, to the extent possible, alleviate overcrowding, plan for future student population trends, expedite student placement in modern facilities through potential consolidations and closures, increase student diversity within schools, ensure safe, equitable, and more expeditious transportation. Goal one. Goal two, develop a plan for the disposition of our vacant and non-instructional properties. Some of those are owned, some of those are rented, in the RPS inventory in an effort to raise funds for new school construction, develop mutually beneficial partnerships with Richmond cultural institutions, focus more of our time, energy, and money on our core work, which is teaching and learning, not property management. And of course, open to other goals on that front as well. And then last, to use the work from goal one and goal two to update the facilities plan that this board put in place at the end of 2017, so that we can have a comprehensive updated facilities plan that takes into consideration all of these complicated moving pieces. I'm going to pause there. The next slide lists the vacant and non-instructional properties. I need to make one adjustment there. Ruffin Road is actually currently being used by a small number of early childhood personnel, but our plan is to move them as they're given the state of that facility, so it will soon be vacant. And there was also, I received a question about the building that's on the Carver property in the back. Our understanding is, yeah, Moore Street, is that the building has been surplus to the city, but it still rests on the grounds of Carver. And so I think there's some further investigation that we need to explore to determine who exactly has the authority to make determinations with that. And then the last slide gives a draft timeline for what we would like to achieve. Let me just briefly go through this. We have already contracted with Crawford GIS to do the demographic study as the foundation of this work. Obviously, if you want to begin community engagement, we think it would also be helpful to secure some type of external expertise around property assessment and to help us understand for some of these vacant properties or non-instructional properties, what might be the value of some of these, what would be the appropriate way to even consider if we were going to do something different with them. And then as you see, we will complete the studies, begin to bring draft proposals to the board and the community with the goal of hopefully having a final proposal for the board to consider in October of 2019. And then that would allow us, just under a year, to prepare for implementation so that families could have a full academic year to respond to whatever new lines or changes might occur. Without a pause and open it to the board for feedback and guidance.
Ms. Long?
The only thing, I really liked it, and I'm real excited about the timeline. I hope you didn't make that matter. But the one other thing under number one would be that, to the extent possible, there's a certain logic to where students go, to elementary, middle, and high school. So that maybe kids from homicide court, we go to an elementary school with a group, and then they go to the middle school with a group, and then we send them across the city, across the river, to a high school, then pull on a group. It seems silly to me, basically, that we do that. So as we're doing this work, I think we ought to try and incorporate the children from the elementary schools that go to a certain middle school, but then would go on to a logical place. Just some sort of logic in that flow would be an additional goal.
Ms. Dor?
I have two thoughts. One, I think it's important, also, I would be interested in reviewing some lessons learned. I don't have a clear idea of how things got to where they are, why some schools have 25 months of a classroom and some don't. So I'd just like to understand a little bit of, or have a discussion about the history so we can learn from that. And two, I think hiring a demographics firm has been helpful with my understanding along the lines of lessons learned, that sometimes there are developments or plans in the city that we might know about in our districts that a demographics firm might not be able to appropriately forecast. So being able to understand, getting a hold of the community in terms of what big new apartment buildings are going up or big new, whatever they are. And then, three, I am really interested in how, if we are going to look at vacant and non-instructional property, which I think we should, I want to make sure that if we are going to consider selling that property, that we incorporate... that we incorporate all of the different tools in our tool belt. So tax credits, economic opportunity zones. There's a lot of weird financing stuff out there. And what I really don't want to have happen is something like the West Hampton School that got given 10 months accord. That was a huge mistake and huge missed opportunity. So I think there are a lot of smart people in this town that can potentially help us think through some of the structures for selling properties and the best ways to make sure that that money stays in the school system.
Ms. Gibson, Ms. Valo, and Ms. Young.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a question. My question is, so myself and some of my colleagues have been, you know, pushing for some time to begin everything with rezoning process. And I, and I see that separately from the facilities plans. It's something that we already had voted on as a board. So I guess I'm unclear. There was a majority on the board that voted for a plan that denied the school closure. And I'm wondering why we are visiting that. So there's that. And then I guess that's the question. But I put that, also I want to put it in the context of, I feel like we really missed an opportunity because City Council just voted on approving a facilities plan that was, I think, based on that plan that will be adopted. And I'm not clear why we did not, at the very least, have a discussion or agenda item to discuss that plan that was proposed by the mayor and then adopted by City Council. And so now, since I've been talking about that after the fact.
Ms. Valo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Gibson's comments do bring out a lot of thoughts in my mind, but I'd like to start with a couple. One, I think the source that shut us a little bit is how we continue to project student enrollment. I know that when there was some development on the north side, shortly after like 2018, there was a lot of concern in the community about the development that was going in and how it may impact all kinds of city services, including schools. So my hope is that we can find a way to collaborate with the city to at least make sure that some of our own assessments is done before a development is put in place. This is basically what we found out. But that one was, they'll, they'll bill. And but I sorted that later. And if we have to go to going out of school, we're going to new school, we're dealing with the transportation issue after that. That can really hurt the school system. So I want to make sure that when the such development improves the cost of schools or is recognized. So that we can start with that and hopefully the city orders the developers to make sense of their account and include that process in the law. Another is that, you know, I know we're going to do really timely, that's a precautionary thing. And I think that's a smart move for us. As I do think it should at least lay out some, some expectation. I just know it's what should really define these boards and decide to know. But some sort of expectation for what we're going to have as a major adjustments for the necessary. Because if we respect these, these pressures, the ones that are and we're not completely satisfied with that, it's something. So if you're willing to go out there and let go down the line, I'd throw that to you. And then I do definitely think that, um, that mistakes point, there was, oh, I couldn't have said before, but before, and I'm certainly not, I don't know, to knock the number of council for a total pass. And but I do think that I still agree collaboration between the bodies of the administration when we, and school modernization that that's a good rule, was that there was one required collaboration from the school board and the mayor's office and they didn't come up with a plan. Actually, I think that we adjust that before we can get council in order to consider and do business with the planning for, like I said, these sports that move forward, particularly with not, with the COVID pandemic, I mean, since 2000. But that now is the lab looking for assistance. So 2024, which I think will be a lot of years, that's the plan. And which I, we're able to see that passion that we're going to through the construction and the financials. And so. I'm going to report, if you can, I've been part of that of the consolidation and since we got, we had to turn it up as a preparation consideration. So the decision, the ability to say, yeah, we have to fix how we're going to be, and I think that's some of the problems and conflict, I think, situations that are normal. I think that we have that challenge, our problem.
Ms. Valo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And also, I don't want to report, thank you, Madam Chair, for your wonderful words, case and I, so to speak, you agree that we can use that as a platform to advocate professional funding for schools, if we should. So when we say, I'd like to invite you to move into modern facilities through potential consolidations and closures, I also think we should do construction. I certainly think we should be looking at all options that comes to pretty much using modern facilities. But I would much prefer to start with construction before we're talking about closures.
So Valo, I would like to add. I would be there. And I thought it was a city, um, you could be there. But lessons learned. That when I served my first term, first term, we did a partial rezoning for the elementary schools. And the thought was, because the middle school and high school had not come online, that we left that responsibility up to the next board. So with that being said, lessons learned with this board, it is a must that we must complete a comprehensive rezoning plan that includes, that includes elementary, middle, and high. Because if not, we will be in the same place if we have a turnover. The board representation that may not be in place as it is now. So I would encourage that we rezone comprehensive throughout the district, elementary, middle, and high. Because this school district, we have not had a rezoning, comprehensive rezoning since busing. And that was back in the seventies. So over the course of time, we have piecemealed this process. So we have to be willing to do the work because I want you to know, this is not going to be an easy process at all. And also, when we build schools and as we plan for the new schools, we need to ensure that the plan of the school and the land that's around the school is used as it is intended to use. For an example, Braw Rock Elementary School. The trailers that have been placed on Braw Rock, the new Braw Rock, those trailers were not intended for the use of that land. The use of the land was used, was intended for playground, baseball fields, softball fields, soccer fields, intended for the use of that students and the community. So we build, once we start building these new schools and we have plans in place for our students, then that's what the intended use should be for. Also, I want us to keep in mind our feeder patterns. I know Ms. Owen was talking about that sequence from elementary, middle, to high. Take the feeder pattern in consideration, housing development throughout the city, and demographics. And last, and not least, when we say this again, the removal of the trailers that have been slated or placed on the grounds at Braw Rock Elementary School that was intended for our children to play and learn. And that. That whole plan still makes me very upset because the community really provided their input in the planning of the last four schools that were built. And I just caution this board not to go down that same path.
Got the subpoena?
Yeah, thank you for sharing that. Like you said, yes, we definitely need to complete rezoning. But what I don't want is the right job. Just for safety sake, then we did. It takes a lot of time to be done properly and well known.
Ms. Berg?
Rezoning is difficult. I'm thinking about the last one we did, we spent. My concern is we ought to talk about the equity piece. If we're thinking of just shifting numbers instead of children, we're going to have, continue to repeat what's already in place. So we must be very, very, very mindful of the diversity piece. Must be very mindful of truly having our schools to represent all the communities of which we serve. And that is going to take time. And all the buildings, new apartments, every day I see a different apartment being built. Things are going to change in Fulton because of the Fulton properties that Eastland will be open, a big, huge apartment complex. So it's going to be, as we plan to move forward, I'm going to ensure what we have now in terms of numbers will change when it's time to make that final decision. So we're going to have to be flexible on that. We've got the subpoena and also take our time to try to do this right because it's harder to write a wrong. Let's put children first.
And this one more comment in looking at best practices to be, as Dr. Sabini said, to properly plan and plan for the future. Rezoning is a 12 to 18 month process. So this is, we have a lot of work before us on top of the other projects that we have. So let's keep that in mind. Ms. Dor?
I just had a couple of other thoughts. When Mr. Barlow said expedite student placement in modern facilities, he added construction, I would add renovation as well. I think it's a tool that we haven't, we could utilize better than we haven't. And I've talked about this a lot, especially because you can, if you renovate a building, you can get 80 cents on the dollar back for historic tax credits. So it would be great if we could take advantage of that. And then two, I don't know, I know we have a lot going on, but I do think that there's a, also another best practice of having K-38 schools. And so if, I think it should just be on the table.
Ms. Garden?
I was just, I was just going to try to repeat that that I heard. So I'm going to try to summarize. A number of the board members spoke about feeder patterns and trying to make those as sensible as possible. A number of you suggested that we take some time to really document the past as a means of learning some lessons and hopefully not making any mistakes that we made in the past. Also a lot of discussion around doing everything we can to understand from both the city and from private sector what new developments are in the pipeline and how are those going to affect neighborhoods and school needs so that we don't wind up needing to adjust things right after we've made the rezoning. A discussion about the city's facilities plan that was recently approved by the council and perhaps bringing that to the board for discussion. Some expectations setting about how frequently we would revisit rezoning. Is there some time period that we should clarify going forward so that we can be on some consistent schedule? Let's see. Planning for the trailers, hopefully obviating the need for many of them. Definitely not rushing this, getting it right, being mindful of the equity pieces to this, and there are many. And to make sure that we put renovation on the table, we're going to store tax credits, opportunity zones, and so on and so forth as means of stretching our borders and looking at K-38 schools as something to consider as well. Thank you. That was very helpful.
Next item, 7.06. Receive an update on high school transfers.
Good evening, Jen. As of Friday, excuse me, as of Friday, as of Friday, we have reviewed and corrected over 1,500 senior transcripts. And we anticipate final sign off on credits, GPAs, and courses being correct this week by the VDOE. Since we began this work, we have made over 1,500 system-wide fixes. That includes 450 miscellaneous title, course code, and credit fixes, 725 changes to exceptional ed courses and the academic level, 175 credit removals for regular level courses, 150 credit removals for local exceptional ed courses. And all seniors have had their transcripts reviewed by us in the VDOE teams at minimum of three times. And at least 250 of those have had their transcripts updated and reviewed four to five times. Our counselors also made a rather large number of corrections unique to their schools and their students, including entering missing data such as grades or transfer information, correcting data anomalies. Sometimes historically, you correct something manually in the system. It doesn't convert year over year. Removing duplicate courses. We estimate that our counselors made over 1,000 corrections over the last six weeks for transcripts. So while we still have much more work to do, we are eager to get final sign off and plan to send updated transcripts and letters home in the coming days and week, in the following week. But we plan for this work to be completed very soon for seniors. And then we will then turn our attention to juniors, sophomores, and freshmen. And we are crossing our fingers that because we've done so many system-level fixes on the front end, that that work will go significantly faster. That is our update. That is our update. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
If I could just add, the work continues, there's still much to do with the underclassmen and a few unique cases on the senior front that we are working through. But again, the magnitude of this project is hard to fully describe. But the team from RPS and the team from the VDOE have been working in close collaboration for quite some time now, so I just want to again thank our team, Dr. App, and the whole leadership team who have played a role in this, not to mention all of the VDOE partners. So a lot of work, a lot of progress, still a lot more to go for the rest of our high school students. But certainly moving in the right direction, so thank you.
Next item?
Next item, section eight, budgeted items. Item eight point zero two, receive the financial statement for the period ended December thirty first, twenty eighteen.
I'd like to provide the update for the revenue report that's of December twenty eighteen. First, we're continuing to monitor the key non-contracted sub and part-time expenditure listed there on page one. When you compare December eighteen to December seventeen, we are outperforming by about two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. So we're going to really do a bit of position management there. On the revenue side, we recorded about twenty eight point four of our revenue versus thirteen point eight percent at the same time last year. So again, a big accounting point here. The one point that does still continue to give me anxiety, make me up at night, is that we are trending very high on transportation when compared to last year. And as Gibson pointed out during the last meeting, this is partially a function of us under budgeting, which we are correcting for this year, but it's also a consequence of us serving more kids special education needs. So we'll continue to monitor this and make appropriate adjustments.
Ms. Gibson?
Could you repeat the note regarding the substitutes?
Yeah, so with the four categories listed here, only the four categories spanning to last year's December eighteen, we're trending two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars under what we were last year.
And so I wanted to just know, I'm not sure that that's a good thing. I mean, it could identify, I don't think we're paying our subs enough. Can you say?
It's not really that, it's more so, we want a better job covering and not just giving schools positions without being aggressively providing those positions.
Are these both single day subs or is this specifically involved?
It's not just subs, like sub principals, sub assistants, it's just, so our principal is out, we didn't fill in the role of the substitute principal in some cases. Some cases we're giving schools unbudgeted positions period because they need requests, sort of vision back to those requests.
Thank you. Next item?
Item eight point zero three, receive the superintendent's twenty nineteen, twenty twenty estimate of needs and twenty nineteen, twenty twenty-three capital improvement budget.
So this evening, we're going to continue a bit of the budget conversation. Mr. Simmons is going to provide an overview, as was requested last time, of the use of the fund balance of last year as well as the transfers that were made this year and be able to have that discussion per the board's request. We've also provided a summary of the board's non-personal expenses so that the board can begin to consider if there are any adjustments that it would like to make going into next year. If the board would like to discuss that now, I would welcome that. If they would like to take some time to look over that information and defer that conversation, we can do that as well. But if the board does give some guidance now, then the administration can try to put together a bit of a proposal for the board to consider at our next budget work session.
So this is a description of how we use the twelve point four million dollars in the fund dollars. The left-hand column, these are the items that we discussed in previous board meetings. The middle column, the right column, the identification as to whether or not these expenses are recurring or not recurring. The main deciding line between if it's recurring or not recurring was just this personnel, personnel costs. If it did, then we did say that it was a recurring change. So for example, in the middle, we have a two percent raise for all contracted employees and a six percent increase in healthcare costs as recurring costs. Under staffing, we have five ESL teachers, nine other support staff, three body unit counselors, one internal auditor as recurring costs. Then under the other expenditures, we have a ten percent increase in plus whatever monetary salaries and athletic trainers contract, which compired dedicated nurses for the disabilities and transfers to Patrick and the CEA, Code RBA for our students. And then we have a local retirement plan that has a full plan or legacy plan. And the non-recurring expenditures, we have pretty much everything that was non-personal when we included the trans, the set of fund dollars. So we have polished the living room checks, trauma-informed care, consorted justice practices. We have instructional supplies for teachers, so we would like to find a way to make this a recurring cost that we can provide teachers with this benefit. We've also cut the athletic equipment for our brackets of high schools as a recurring expenditure. Then finally, there's three point seven in specific education programs. Just wanted to give some more clarity as to what this is. In the past, RPS has submitted for reimbursement to the city items that were not allowable under capital rules. So we spent reimbursement for things that weren't really capital projects. And that number has been running over the years, so we did split three point seven million dollars toward that debt deficit. And so one time cost. So I think any questions on this?
Ms. Gibson?
Thank you. So my general statement on this is that we revise the way we're looking at this fund balance to revert to a process where we are using one-time needs. And so I don't, I think that, I think that, I mentioned this in our previous discussions, I think we need as a board to see a holistic view of the items together because developing a budget is about prioritizing, you know? And so we need to be able to look at these asks side by side with all the other budget asks. And I think that should be presented in that kind of traditional breakdown that's determined by the state. And so then, in this fund balance breakdown, we would simply include one-time costs that are traditionally used with one-time money. Because it's confusing to be able to prioritize in an effective way.
So I have a question for clarity. So Ms. Gibson, are you suggesting that the board use side-by-side comparison funding year eighteen to funding year nineteen?
So I think last year, we, the body approved a budget where we were spending one-time money with recurring costs. And so I think we don't want to repeat that, right? And so I think that as we're looking at this fund balance, let's then identify one-time expenditures that can be paid for with the fund balance because these are recurring items. And these recurring items are, you know, should be looked at along with all of the other recurring items. Do you see what I'm saying? So, so that we can look at, because, right, it's confusing. We have a strategic plan budget and that's organized by priority, but we don't have a document that all together has all of the positions, you know, how many full-time equivalents, what the line items are for all of those listed out very clearly. I mean, I think a number of the people that came to speak today are not really familiar with all of the parts and pieces of the budget because we haven't put together a document that paints a very cohesive, you know, comprehensive look at the budget. So I mean, essentially what I'm saying is these items here that are recurring, put in a document with all the other recurring items, and then let's look at the fund balance the way that we should, which is to look at one-time costs, which I think there are some that can be put in here.
So just to clarify, the raise, the healthcare costs, the ESL teachers, by them will support counselors, certainly all that is on school budgets. So I have already articulated that I have no intention of cutting any of that. So that's where that sits. The other, I'm assuming the board doesn't want to cut the order they just added. And then the other expenditures seem rather critical. So we will certainly provide the whole Congress to picture over the next week or so as we have more of these sessions. But what I want to clarify is that everything in that middle section from the administration's perspective is either school based, since I've already publicly committed to not cutting, so it will recur. Or it seems critical, and so again, I'm assuming that it will recur. So if that was not clear, my apologies, so I'm trying to articulate that now. But ultimately, yes, all of this will be in one completely. I also want to clarify, the fund balance we have to be used for this year is a little bit more than four hundred thousand dollars. So this is just a retrospective on what we did last time around. And so of that four hundred, as we discussed, I believe, last time, by the board's policy, are required to put twenty-five percent towards school maintenance, so about a hundred thousand, twenty-five percent towards the paydown of the legacy retirement plan. So that leaves an additional two hundred thousand that is open for discretion that we could use towards other expenses or not cutting as much, and so on and so forth.
So I'm hearing from the superintendent, so of the current fund balance, we have two hundred thousand that the board can decide or determine the allocation for the use of those monies to maybe address.
Yes, I just want to clarify technically, until the council re-appropriates it to RPS, we don't have any use of it. So that is a critical step that needs to happen.
Ms. Gibson?
So I want to clarify that the, and I'm not suggesting that by looking at comprehensive things would not be voted on and approved by the board to include in our budget, but rather that a fund ballot, use of the fund balance should be, should be, include one-time costs as would be our best practice to do. And so the four hundred thousand dollar remaining is based on this allocation of the fund balance, which the board collectively has yet to vote on. And this is our decision to decide how we're going to allocate the fund balance. Right now, the amount left over is four hundred based on this allocation, but that is up to the board to determine.
Just to clarify, because I want to show my understanding, this allocation was approved by the board last spring. We're spending this money right now on these people. So for example, the ESL teachers exist. We're spending all that money. The fund balance we have going into this budget cycle is the board's. So I'm not, I don't follow.
Right now, we're working, this budget right here, the process that we're working on right now is the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty budget, right? So in our last budget process, we voted on hiring those folks based on that. Now this year, we don't have, because there's different fund balance of money, right? There's the money that we get recurring, so this was one of the questions that we received, right? There's recurring money that we get, and then there's money that we have left over. So the money that we have left over right now is about, is about fourteen million dollars, right? But we're deciding that we're going to apply some of that to these recurring costs. My quest is that we look at the allocation of the fourteen million dollar fund balance and include one-time funds, and that our ask for recurring costs includes these items which are recurring for our operational budget next year, right? And that will include both these recurring items, which we know we are going to ask for again, along with those other new recurring items that are on the strategic plan. My hope would be that we also include the positions so that we are cutting through central office. And to be frank, I think there are some other needs, but I think we need to look at all of those new recurring needs together in one document.
So so definitely all together in one document, but again, well, I think what you're saying is that you would like that as a city for not just the strategic plan costs and not just the raise, but also for twelve million dollars to cover everything we did with the one-time money, which certainly is one perspective. I put forth a different one, which is that we do want to maintain these things, and so that's why we're taking some cuts. But again, I want to make sure that we're all on the same page. We don't have fourteen million dollars sitting to be used for next year. This use of those dollars is occurring right now as we speak. So the only amount that is going to be left is this four hundred K. Because we spent it in many recurring ways, ways that I stand behind, we have to come up with the delta to maintain those things, which I have articulated to the board. The best way to do that is for us to make some cuts centrally. But that money isn't currently available to be allocated for next year. So I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Also to add to the statement by the superintendent, and I think it's also important for public consumption that the twelve point four million fund balance from the last budget cycle, funding year eighteen was approved by the budget last year, and those monies have been allocated from what we see on this document. And also documentation, a request was sent to council for the reallocation of, for the use of the fund balance. So I want to make sure that we're all on the same page with the information. And if it would even help that our clerk can provide the board documentation of that information when this was approved and what exactly what was. And what exactly was it?
If we're good on this discussion, I would want to draw your attention to board non-personnel costs. I apologize for being rather tangy, we were just trying to squeeze it all into one page. So then I defer to the chair if you would like to discuss some of this now and provide some direction about areas where we might make some adjustments, or if you would prefer to just take this and at our next meeting have that discussion. Also glad to answer questions and try to respond as best as we possibly can.
Ms. Dor. I think that as we are going into critical budget season, we've got lots of needs. It is only incumbent on us to look at our $700,000. This is not even on, um, this is the non, what is it?
Non-personnel.
Non-personnel $700,000. So asked for it last time, glad to see it here. And I think it's really important that we, leadership starts at the top. As superintendent cameras made cuts to his budget. Um, I think it's incumbent on us to also look at this with a critical eye. I'm happy to talk about it tonight, but I'll defer to the board if they want some more time. I've seen this a million times.
One note, if I may, you've already made a cut, which is the 48K for the lobbyists, because we know how to lobbyists, so. Yes. The very first one.
So. It's kind of interesting to look at all of this because, um, it's, I'm surprised we managed to get off these scales of $10,000. I think that's reasonable. And I, non-local travel and the periodicals, what you script, and without, with the force of being here, I'm not sure you can answer these questions. But the subscriptions and publications for the school board, not for you, not from them, but for the school board, I don't know what magazines and periodicals we're getting that we could probably have get, I mean, it seems to me. I also, I know that my colleague, Ms. Ju Young, often says that our discretionary school board funds, he doesn't even believe in them at all. But since they're also funds for after professional development, which we are supposed to do, that's what we should be using them for, but they're discretionary, so we can use that for other things. I, I don't know how we go about changing that, if you could call it something different than discretionary school fund. But it's kind of the way it is for, um, for the internal auditor, PD conference travel reimbursement. If we, instead of having it be discretionary, if we did describe it as PD conference travel reimbursement, then that would be what we use it for and not other things. And I don't think that we necessarily have to be this much money, but just putting that out there. But if we could rename the category to be for PD conference travel reimbursement instead of, I don't know, I hear you, I don't know. Because I know that some of our people like to, you know, they're lollipops. So that's just my, that would be my part of the faculty.
Just a few other questions.
In regards to the subscriptions and publication, that goes towards like our law books, articles that we have to run for public hearings, things of sort like that. Paying, reaching time dispatch for papers that we receive, that's what that goes to.
Can you receive from the Charles's account?
Yes, ma'am, we receive a daily newspaper every day, so we have to pay for that subscription. And.
Yes, Mr. Allen.
And we also receive the School Board Association magazine, monthly magazines.
You've been after second said.
In the convention, oh. But in terms, I mean, in terms of, um, not having additional money for schools beyond non-professional. Such as sending students to different activities or staff persons as well. That falls under that category, correct? But allocate to us to, you know, cut back on time, but professional development comes first. I hope we don't get to the point where it's.
What's the difference in that?
So we can certainly, Ms. Collins, if you don't mind, um, doing a little bit of digging so that we can provide the board exactly what are the subscriptions and so on and so forth. I also do want to know, looking at some of the bigger ticket items. We have a contract for $100,000 to do student activity fund audits. That seems rather excessive to me. Many of our student activity funds don't have that much money in them. We also now have two auditor positions, and so it seems to me that that should be able to be handled in-house. And so I'm not certain that that is an expense that is absolutely critical. And so I think that might be something that, um, the board might want to discuss, um, with its policy.
I agree. Ms. Allen.
Thank you. I, I, and it may be more appropriate to talk about this in another forum, but I am curious about whether we, as far as our legal services obligation goes. I understand that's our contractual obligation, but I am curious to know how, how much we deviate from that. Do we go far over that, what other kinds of legal expenses are involved as well?
So would it be amenable to the board if we tasked the administration to come back with a breakdown of what's in the student activity fund audit, or whether we could get rid of that? A breakdown of our legal expenditures? And then maybe we can do a look back on how the district's school board funds are actually spent? For consideration at a future meeting, if that's even amenable to everyone? Yes.
I think also, I know that other districts have started to bring in house, and perhaps this will work for us differently. But I think it'd be worth looking at, um, legal line item and how that is being done by other districts. Any potential cost savings there?
So three biggest areas being our discretionary funds, legal, and then the student activity fund audit are three areas of opportunity potentially. Yeah, but that's two now. But yes, we can definitely look at it. Teddy pinching. I think Dr. Sapie brought up, um, at last, the last meeting, also looking at the salary piece of this and our salaries. Is that something that we want to cut on the table with board members?
Well, I recommend it that we had a wait or go the fund paid to us by week.
Ms. Allen?
You know, at the very least, I think discussing, discussing whether there's an approach that we could take where board members wanted to do that on an individualized basis. You know, I think paying is, if I find myself in a situation where I have unpaid income or something like that, then, you know, that would be an important part of my budget. Frankly, as someone with not so insignificant student loan obligation, I also find it to be an important part of my budget. But I know we all have those types of, our own financial needs and concerns, but I definitely think it's something that we can discuss as a whole about whether there is an individual opt-out approach that makes sense, and that's certainly considerate.
Ms. Gibson?
And one other point with that too is, you know, this is a position that is fairly time-consuming. And I want to ensure that moving forward, you know, people at any income level feel comfortable or would be able to participate in that, and that the salary and time commitment, you know, would not restrict someone from wanting to do that.
So, um, so then that's four things on the table, Ms. Sapie.
Just wanted, I didn't want to forget the recommendations that I made at the last meeting pertaining to the office supplies, investigating those and seeing how we can save those areas.
I do want to note, we're going to look into this, but you may not have the authority to change your own salaries. You may only have the authority to do so for future boards, so this might be new.
Ms. Allen?
But I just want to make the point to the public that the personnel toll is not just denied by us.
That is correct. It is also your clerk, your deputy clerk, your auditor, and your deputy auditor.
So, yes. So just in case anybody screwed me up, thank you. But we're making all that money. Trust me.
It's a cool 10K, but don't get $100,000.
Wow. Okay, so.
Welcome to my.
Ms. Gibson.
I just want to add, um, yes, we all need to, um, there's a burden of cuts, but also I wanted to be on the record that RPS, Richmond City, will probably the lowest-paid school board members in the state. It's gas money. And work. If you do the work that is required as a board member, that money allocated, what they call, so-called salary, it should be more, but I'm just saying, we are probably the lowest-paid school board in the state of Virginia.
So to conclude this great discussion, the things that still, that we'd like to task the administration to look at are, one, a look back on how discretionary school board funds have been spent and potentially reallocating some of that to professional development as opposed to sort of smaller projects. Two, look at legal, our legal expenditures, what we're spending on legal, and look at in-source versus outsource. Three is the student activity fund audit, the $100,000, could we just in-source that audit with our existing two auditors? And four, seems like maybe there's not a lot of appetite here, but keeping on the table at least for one more meeting, school board salaries. And if there's an option for people, it seems like what I'm hearing is that not a lot of consensus around getting rid of those salaries, but if people would like to donate their salaries back to the school board, is there a mechanism for that?
Can do.
Ms. Gibson? Before we move on to the next budget item, I wanted to add, um, more specifically about the budget development process. My hope was that at today's meeting, um, we would be talking a bit more about the, um, the reorganization and cuts in the central office.
We're going to continue that conversation at the next budget process.
Good evening again.
Apologies for bringing this policy to you again. As we've gone through the transcript review with the VDOE, we, additional changes or issues with our policy continue to be uncovered. And I would say, we, as I mentioned last time, we really do need to do a larger review of our policy as it pertains to GPA, weights, rank, and diploma types, and get really clear. However, at the request of the VDOE and at the recommendation, as a deeper review, I'm bringing, I'm bringing this policy to you to ask you to wait first read to make one change, which is to remove the weighting indicated on the far left that has noted a line curriculum slash M. You've noticed this in our policy, this typically applies to students who are on a modified curriculum or what is now known as an applied studies diploma. So most importantly, an applied studies diploma, which is, is the updated term compared to the aligned curriculum, is not dependent on credits, so this weighting is not needed. So a student who's on an applied studies diploma does not earn credits for courses that are modified if he will. Secondly, there is an inequity here in terms of seeing that on a subset of students based on the sort of course type, they have less weight than a standard course. And so we are bringing this to your review and asking to wait first read and adopt the policy as presented.
Just procedurally, you would have to vote to suspend the rule to adopt the policy at the first read and then vote on whether or not you approve the policy.
I made the need to suspend the rule. Do I have to write that down?
So it's removed by the storm and is seconded by this first to suspend the rule to adopt the policy.
I'm trying.
To restate what Ms. Owen's motion, I have a motion by Ms. Owen, seconded by Ms. Burke, to move to suspend the rule on policy adoption so that we can adopt the first read if we vote to do so.
The motion would be that you suspend the rule on policy adoption so that you can adopt.
adopt on a first reading tonight, if you're able to do so, if you vote to do so. The motion made by Ms. Owen and seconded by Ms. Burke, is that you suspend the rule on policy adoption, so that you can adopt on a first reading tonight, if you're able to do so, if you vote to do so, I'm sorry.
Any discussion? Call the question.
Ms. Dorr?
Yes.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Dr. Sapini?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Madam Chair, the motion passes seven zero.
So we need a motion to approve the policy as presented.
I surrender.
Second. It's been moved by Ms. Owen and seconded by Ms. Burke to approve the policy as presented. Any discussion? Call the question.
Ms. Dorr?
Yes.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Dr. Sapini?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you.
Next item?
Next item is 9.03, to receive for action or personnel action.
Good evening, school board. Collins, if you would help me, I just want to be, thank you. Thank you. This evening, the recommended talent office actions for the school board meeting, scheduled for Monday, February 4th, 2019, include the nomination of 12 employees, the change of contract of 38 employees, the transfer of one employee, the resignations of 11 employees, the furlough of 11 employees, the returning from leave of six employees, the retirement of one employee, the rescission of one employee, the termination of one employee, and the name change of two employees. Are there any questions? Thank you, thank you. We need a motion?
And that we approve the recommended HR actions as presented.
It's been moved by Mr. Barlow and seconded by Ms. Owen to approve the HR actions as presented. Any discussion? Call the question.
Ms. Dorr?
Yes.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Dr. Sapini?
Yes.
Mrs. Page?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Next item?
Next item is the consent agenda, 10.01, to receive for action board travel and district activity requests, I did not receive any. Madam Chair, it's a pleasure, your pleasure.
Next item.
Next, next item is section 11, other informational items, section 11.01, other informational items. Are you happy, Madam Chair?
Ms. Dorr?
Item announcement.
On, oh, next. Next item, section 12, new business, 12.01, other informational items.
On March 3rd, at Thomas Jefferson High School, Jim Ryan, the president of UVA and the author of the famous book Five Miles Away, A World Apart, will be speaking alongside of Dr. Susan Gooden, assistant, or interim dean at the Wilder School at VCU, and author of Race and Social Equity, A Nervous Area, I'm hearing my name, Nervous Area of Gold. It's at 6:30 at Thomas Jefferson, so please spread the word, and the event is free and open to the public, but TJ is using it to raise funds for the school, so, March 4th at 6:30.
Ms. Burke? I'm happy to announce, I'm sorry, happy to announce that this past Saturday, Armstrong High School's Law Club, of which our superintendent gave them a pep talk beforehand on this past Friday while visiting, but I'm told they did quite well, it is the only law club in Richmond Public Schools, and they competed in a mock trial at Armstrong to include neighboring schools as well. So hopefully, now in March, they'll move on to the state competition. So we're very happy about the sponsors, the law organizations that helped them to prepare. Just some wording that I received regarding the mock trial, our students were very comfortable with the case, they didn't know which side they had to, whether to defend, they weren't sure, but they were very comfortable on Saturday morning, so Dr. Bell told me that afternoon, because of the case, the sad, the unfortunate part about it, the challenging part, it was, the topic was about, do you recall, about, I think it was a student prom, and some students were intoxicated?
And there was a car accident.
And there was a car accident, so the trauma kind of threw some of our neighboring areas, a lot of children had dealt with a lot of tragedy, and so, so they, they were more equipped at that moment of being able to survive and present their cases, so, you know, it's a good thing and not a good thing. But the good point is that Armstrong High School in the 7th District showed up, posted, and did well, I'm so proud of the Wildcats at Armstrong, you don't have that on your respect?
If, if I may, I had the opportunity to visit with them on Friday before the competition, and hear some of the opening arguments and some of the closing arguments, and they were on point, was really, really impressive, and so I have some of it on my phone, so glad to share it with folks, and I tweeted out one young man's opening argument, it was really, really quite impressive, so big shout out to Armstrong.
Another announcement that I have, and this is related to Armstrong again, on the campus of Hampton University, we just have opened up a legacy park on campus of Hampton University, and in that park is a statue of Samuel Armstrong, which was named, Armstrong High School is named after Samuel the Armstrong, and his statue is now on the campus of Hampton University. So I thought I wanted to share that great news, the naming of Armstrong High School. Next item?
Next item, closed session.
Section 2.2, then 3711A, the one of the Court of Virginia, that's the 51st amendment that moved the school board to consider a convenient closed session to discuss motion performance, motion salaries, disciplinary, disciplining, or retention of employees of the division, including reviewing and distancing, full personnel adjustments for FY 2019 to 2020. Second.
It's been moved by Dr. Sapini and seconded by Ms. Barlow.
Ms. Dorr?
Yes.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Dr. Sapini?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
This is really intense.